Mr. Bennie, can pull the board, please.
Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Hartzell.
Present.
Mr. Everett.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Henderson.
Present.
I'm present. Mr. Haney.
Present. All right, good evening. We're going to go ahead and have order just a little bit to start. M Y Lane one C L L C, M Y Lane, Morrisville, P A one nine zero three zero. T N P thirteen dash zero two eight dash zero seven five dash zero zero three. Asked to continue to June. Any issues with doing that?
I make motion to table.
Okay. Second. Mr. Bennie, pull the board?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right. All right, we'll move on to item number one. Nicholas, Athena, Nicole, and John, excuse me if I butcher this. Ficarres, nine eighty Trenton Road, Pharaoh Hills, P A one nine zero three zero. T N P number thirteen dash zero one seven dash three hundred. Thirteen dash zero one seven dash three zero three. And thirteen dash zero one seven dash zero three zero three zero zero one. Waiver of land development for building addition.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis here tonight on behalf of the applicants, Nicole and John Ficarres. They are here with me tonight along with Mr. Dumack, who's presented the plan that's before you for consideration. The subject property is located at nine eighty Trenton Road in the township. If you recall, we were in front of the planning commission sometime near the end of twenty twenty-three with the sketch plan presentation. After that presentation, Heath finalized the development submission, and then we submitted a waiver of development, which is before the planning commission for discussion this evening. The sum and substance of the application is basically the same or very similar to what the planning commission previously reviewed. If you look at the site plan, which Heath's office has prepared, the site is presently improved with an approximately nine thousand square foot existing building, and we are proposing a building addition of three thousand square feet to the shopping center. This is nothing to do with Cosmos, the restaurant which is existing on site. The intent of the addition is to expand action karate into the new space. And then there is a dance studio on the property that is going to expand into the action karate location. The rest of the property is, for the most part, remaining relatively untouched or unmodified. We are reducing the impervious surface by a little bit, by about three percent on site. We are planting four street trees, which you can see on the site plan and which we'll discuss as part of our waiver requests. And then in the area that's adjacent to the residential zone district, on the eastern portion of the site, we are planning a series of arborvities as well. For the most part, though, I would suggest that the application is relatively straightforward. And again, we're looking to do this so that we can keep two good businesses happy and successful in the township. So what I would like to do is have Heath do a very brief overview of the site plan and then have Nicole address the planning commission briefly regarding the intent, and then we'll walk through the waivers that we're requesting this evening. Thank you.
I think you just gave me the overview of the site.
Good evening. Heath Dumack, Dumack Engineering. As was discussed already, it's approximately nine thousand square foot existing building structure with a side porch. We have an existing parking field. We are proposing a three thousand square foot building addition. It has frontage on Trenton Road and on Virgo. However, Virgo is really intended more so for emergency access than anything else. There is a chain link fence running along that right of way line, and I believe it's a gate. Okay, thank you. The remainder of the site, realistically, we're trying to improve what we can on the site. We had originally proposed a rain garden in this area. However, unfortunately, we discovered almost zero infiltration. Basically, a clay-like soil, silty clay underneath basically the entire parking lot. Nowhere to go but down. It wouldn't infiltrate whatsoever. So what we're proposing is basically reducing the impervious surface as best we can while still utilizing the existing parking field and building and planting vegetation as best we can to augment based on what's there. So we are proposing arborvitie. We're proposing street trees plus some additional green space at the along Virgo right of way. That's pretty much all she wrote. The building's been in existence since, quite honestly, before I was in high school. I used to go, not that anyone needs to know this, but I used to go drinking there underage back in the day. So, and that was forty years ago.
It's under more responsible management now.
Thank you. I was going to get to that. That's basically the site in a nutshell. If you'd like, we can go through the review letter or questions that you may have with respect to the site.
Any questions from the board before we go through the waivers requests?
I have a question if that's okay. So taking a look at the plan here, we do see the arborvities planted along the, I guess that would be the eastern side. But really not much other than the four trees along Virga Road. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to plant more trees or move the arborvities? Because the one plot next to the Cosmos, I believe, is Marky's Barber Shop. I was wondering if maybe, or what's that?
I'm sorry. You're talking.
Look behind you.
My apologies. You're talking on the western side?
No.
It's the golden plot.
The lot immediately to the right on the map.
Where the north arrow is.
Yeah, exactly.
I was just wondering why we couldn't get more trees planted along Virga Road. I know they were looking for thirteen originally, and you're looking for a waiver for four. Any reason why we couldn't plant trees along that street frontage? We do have neighbors across the street there.
I would be, and I apologize, we could plant them within the right of way. What we have is we've positioned them basically on the property and off the right of way.
To add on to your comment, if I can, Jesse, is it seems like we've shielded the commercial properties with a white PVC fence, but we've just totally disregarded the neighbors where people are pulling in their parking lot. We have a five-foot or four-foot chain link fence there, and the light is shining right into the neighborhood. So we've taken into account that we should protect the commercial properties, but not the residential properties. I think that's what Jesse's getting at.
So when the Ficarres has purchased the property, which I think the property was in some significant form of disrepair about twenty years ago, was just speaking about this with Nicole. The reason for the fence that was installed, Mr. Bennie, apparently was pursuant to a request actually from the neighbors. I don't know if that had to do with the history of the site, but the neighbors did not want this totally shielded on the frontage along Virga. They had requested the chain link fence be installed and maintained by the Ficarres when they took over ownership of the shopping center, which is what they've done since then. So there might have been turnover, obviously, in the years since they purchased the property, but that was the representation that was made as to why it was built that way. It was actually upon request from the neighbors across Virga.
How long ago was that?
About twenty years ago.
How many parking spots are we losing with the expansion?
None.
We have ninety-six with this, with ninety-four required.
This back area in here has always been basically storage. I believe there is cargo container.
Can you use the microphone? Keith, you've been here plenty of times.
I'm sorry. One of these days, I'll learn. This area back in here, I'll call it to the south of the building, has always been basically cargo container storage. I believe there's a shed, and I think there's one or two work vehicles. The last time I was out there, which was towards the winter, I think there was a truck with a plow.
How come we're calculating parking spaces based on a hundred and fifty square foot? When there's a restaurant and bar there, and a hundred and fifty square foot in a restaurant and bar, there could be twenty people, and they're not all coming in one car. How come we're not calculating the parking spot based on the use, which is a restaurant and bar, which has a different calculation?
I didn't hear the beginning of that question. I'm sorry. Just, well, go ahead, and then I'll get back to the tree planting. So can you repeat that, Mr. Bennie?
Yeah. We have a restaurant and bar use, and the calculation for parking for restaurant and bar use is not one space for every hundred and fifty square feet of building. In a hundred and fifty square feet of a bar and restaurant, you could fit twenty people. So they're not all coming in one car, so I don't know that the parking calculations are adequate.
I can tell you, we, and I apologize. I can tell you, we've had several conversations and, I believe, two meetings with the township engineer and Matt Tequita. And they both reviewed this and approved the parking calc as we have it shown on the plan.
With the additional space, will there be more, I'm assuming there's going to be more customers, right? There's going to be more people taking classes, more people doing dance, things like that, too?
There's not an additional business, but obviously the hope is for, you're doing it because you are anticipating some increase, a bit of an increase in volume. What I will state, going back for a second to the original line of questioning regarding the neighbors, is we have, the Ficarres are in fairly constant communication, considering their ownership history of the site with the neighbors across the street of Virga. If the township, the planning commission, the supervisors would like some additional tree planting along the frontage with Virga, they're certainly amenable to it. I mean, that was, it's not an objection on their part. So they're willing to comply if that's a request that's being made. But I think, again, what I would suggest is, this is not, it's a shopping center, but it's not being built spec, right? You have three businesses there, one of which the Ficarres operate, and they have operated successfully for nearly two decades. And then you have a dance studio and action karate who are trying to remain at this site and be successful, but they've been at the site for a number of years. And I think that the site is being designed in tandem with some of their input and consideration about what is going to be a successful business moving forward and what the site can reasonably accommodate. We're not here asking for a twelve thousand square foot spec structure that we may populate at a later date with undetermined tenants. I understand that there's some turnover, but the whole purpose of this is to accommodate two existing tenants and their expansion, both of whom believe that this is going to be adequate from a parking standpoint for their business to remain successful here.
Is the hair salon state? So you now have four businesses.
Sorry, four, yes.
Is P T and E still there?
No.
What was the equipment that's stored in that lower area now? Who owned that, and where is that going?
Nick, Nick, you can come up.
I'm getting yelled at for the microphone.
It was three storage containers, mostly just from an old construction business I had. I've already worked up. I believe I have two of them being sold, and I'm planning possibly for the third one to get sold. So it was two twenty-foot steel storage containers and one forty-foot steel storage container.
Gotcha. From the Google picture, looks a couple air compressors and two trucks, too, but.
The one is a white pickup truck that I use for plowing.
Any other questions before we go over waivers?
All right, thank you. The, we have the waivers on page two of the Jones Engineering Review Letter. One ninety-one thirty-one A really groups most of these together, and then they're listed again in thirty-nine, forty-one, and forty-eight. But one ninety-one thirty-one A touches on our desire to really remain unchanged with existing conditions along the street frontage. So specifically, a request to keep the fifty-foot right of way along Trenton Road instead of the required eighty, and then the cartway width to remain along Virga Road instead of the required thirty-two feet. And then what I was just referencing, the curbing request along Virga. And then the sidewalks are then repeated at one ninety-one thirty-nine G and one ninety-one forty-one. So one ninety-one thirty-nine G relates to the installation of sidewalks, and then one ninety-one forty-one G relates to curbing. And then we can handle one ninety-one forty-eight B however the planning commission desires. We had couched that as a partial waiver with respect to the street tree installation. I don't know what the phraseology would be, but again, we're amenable if the community would like a couple additional trees planted along Virga Road. And then everything else is a, will comply. The only note further is the lighting plan. Because we're, that's one ninety-one seventy-eight D fourteen. There is a requirement for the lighting plan to be provided that indicates adequate lighting in accordance with one ninety-one thirty-eight. We believe that the site is adequately lit presently in the sense that we're not modifying or adding to the parking field, and the addition is a relatively small addition on site. So again, our thought is that that's sufficient rather than modifying the lighting. If that's something the planning commission would consider, we would add that as a waiver. If not, then it would be a will comply.
This building had two previous additions on it?
I believe so, but I don't know when, you know, when that, before your, before their ownership.
Before their ownership.
Right.
So in total, sum of all the additions, are you still under the fifty percent of expansion of a non-conforming building?
A non-conforming building in what regard?
And Heath's plan, it says that we're expanding a non-conforming building thirty percent, but that's cumulative. So if the other two additions are added, are we still under the fifty percent?
It's in the neighborhood commercial district, and a shopping center is a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial district.
It's violating the setbacks. It's a non-conforming building.
So the conversation with the township during the sketch plan review had to do with the fact that we were not going any further into the setbacks with the building addition, that we're staying out of the setback along Virga, and we weren't encroaching in the setback any closer to the properties on the western portion of the site plan. And we're under, with respect to our building coverage, and we're reducing our impervious surface. The non-conforming building is dimensional in nature, not as to the use. This was something, again, that was discussed, part of why we submitted a sketch plan application and discussed that, because we were trying to analyze whether we need a zoning relief with the application or not.
Also note that you show one dumpster on your plan, but there's at least two out there currently, so at least make dumpster enclosure big enough for that. And also note there aren't any stop signs at the entrances.
We'd be happy to install stop signs.
Have we spoken with Lower Bucks joint? I see the one letter from M M A, but they don't service the property. Don't see much of the water coming in. I know TOFA serves the water supply, I believe, but I believe the sewer is Lower Bucks. Have we spoken to them about the easement that's listed on the joint?
Those conversations have been initiated with Lower Bucks, and we recognize that that would be a requirement of any approval to have the appropriate documentation with Lower Bucks in hand.
Does the existing shopping center go to that easement, the sewers?
It does. However, the sanitary is literally comes out diagonally from the building into a manhole and then into the easement. So it's not coming out straight towards the south.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Honorate a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the preliminary and final land development application of Cosmos. Nine eighty Trenton Road, T N P number thirteen dash zero one seven dash three hundred. Also thirteen dash zero one seven dash three oh three and thirteen dash zero seventeen dash three oh three dash zero zero one. Based on the Jones Engineering Associates letter dated May twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. With, this is the right one, right? With, with the compliance of the Fire Marshal letter of May twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. With waivers of one nine one dash thirty-one point A, one nine one dash thirty-nine point G, one nine one dash forty-one, one nine one dash forty-eight B is a partial. We'd like to try and get more trees in there if at all possible. Please talk to the township, you know, try to comply with what the neighbors want. The lighting plan, as long as you comply with whatever Bucks County actually deems necessary, I would be okay giving that a partial waiver, one ninety-one dash seventy-eight point D fourteen. I think that's it. That was all your.
That's correct. That was it.
I'll second. Mr. Bennie, pull the board, please.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Lutzchuk?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm a no. Mr. Henderson, Mr. Haney?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, item number three, ordinance to amend chapter one ninety-nine Tree Protection Services. We're basically just going to put our comments on record for the planning commission. So if you have how much questions, please state them now.
I mean, I think this is good for the industrial part of the township, but commercial residential-wise, I think we should try to keep that as much as possible, not just a monetary thing. So that would be my only comment about that. Good night.
My comment would be similar, along the fact that allowing a fee in lieu of planting trees kind of defeats the whole purpose of the ordinance, especially in the residential areas. And I don't feel that that'll keep our township the way it's supposed to be as far as the look and the nature aspect of it.
I think this is meant to be an optional choice by the supervisors. I know, I look at some of the tree ordinance that we have, and I think it's a little excessive in certain places. So I think it's, it could be beneficial to both the developers in some ways and the township in some ways, where the ability to replace all the trees that are taken out doesn't exist. So I agree with you, keep the residential trees as much as we can, and just as down in the industrial areas.
I agree with the same as what you guys are saying in the residential area and the industrial areas.
I'm in agreement, too. I think in industrial areas, we make changes, and we try and put trees back in, and we drive by some of the facilities now, and the trees are dying. Over a year or something, a little bit later after the contract's up to maintain them, and we see that the residential area should stay. My one thing I wish we can do is that the funds that come from the industrial section, we can use those funds in an area like the township park to add trees there and other areas where trees may be lacking, where they need to be, to help with like rain gardens and other drainage. I think it'll be a good thing.
I think it would be better if this was more of a hardship provision than, you know. And like you said, I think it's meant to be a partial, but that doesn't mean it doesn't turn into the norm either, so. doesn't turn into the norm either, so.
Correct.
Putting some language in there to make it as a hardship is where it doesn't take over.
I think one, one project in particular comes to my mind, and that was down at the mill where they were clearing a substantial amount of woods, and when they did the calculations, they had to plant like five hundred, six hundred trees, and there's no place on that property left to plant trees that would survive.
Yeah. So take those funds and reinvest them in areas that could use it, and beautification of areas as well.
Yeah, I like what you have to say about that. Take, definitely don't get rid of the funds if we can use them in another area that's more appropriate.
Any other questions, comments? All right, move on to item number four, approval of the minutes from April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. I vote to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second in favor? All right, have a good evening.